Okay. Call the Public Meeting of the American Springs City Council on the 15th of September 2018 at 6:00 PM. The word, more than I explicitly said, but it could be completed. Chief, would you like to lead us in the public meeting?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our all.
Thank you very much. That'll be your first official act of tonight, and we'll have more to come. Uh, well.
Mayor Derray.
Right.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Elder.
Here.
Counselor Roar.
Here.
Counselor Walbrook.
Here.
Mayor Proton Fortune.
Present.
Counselor Todd.
Present.
Um, proof of the agenda, we do have several changes requested the agenda. One is to remove, at the request of staff, remove item F1. The other is a request from Mayor Proton Fortune to remove, consider amendments to the item F4, uh, the September 24th minutes. And last would be to change the title of item K1. I'm at a disadvantage because I don't have that. Do you have the language? Sorry. Um, to change the language of item F, excuse me, K1, uh, to be an executive session pursuant to Manatee Springs City Charter, Section 5.1A, for the purpose of personnel specifically to consider the city administrative position and Section 5.1T, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategies for negotiations, and instructing negotiators in relation to the city administrative position. Those are the changes that I am aware of. Does anybody else have any other changes to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion concerning approval of the agenda. So moved, uh, so moved, or let's just clarify, so moved with the changes that I have.
And, and the mayor just out, um.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion to second any further discussion. If not, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone from the public would like to comment, we generally allow a couple of minutes, or a couple of minutes each. Uh, for someone who'd like to bring up a topic, we typically do not have a dialogue where we break out that topic. We refer to staff. If anybody would like to bring anything to our attention. All right, um, I had one. Um, and that was just to acknowledge and recognize the, the work of our staff. I was going to say on Monday, but it started a lot more, a lot earlier than Monday. For those of you that don't know, uh, we did have a West Grove Church demonstration, some country demonstrations. But more importantly, we really had a, a community coming together around the issues of kindness and a lot of acceptance. And, and I just want to call out our, our city staff. Chief of Police, I'm going to miss somebody, so help me out here. Uh, Denise and Roy and Jeff, let me get the staff first here. Um, I believe that Dylan Becker, uh, I don't believe, I know Dylan Becker was involved. Um, who was this?
All Public Works, they set up all the benefits and stuff.
Um, many of the police department were there. Um, and, and it was just great to see our staff work so well, the staff from the District 14, from the school district. It, it really was great. Uh, they had zero incidents, it went off really well. And in large part, I think that was the planning and cooperation and collaboration between the City of Manatee Springs and the school district. So I want to acknowledge them for all of their hard work, and certainly our staff, where we can keep the kids safe, keep the community safe. I just thought that was a public comment that I wanted to make. Um, all right. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Um, item F. We have three items on the consent calendar. One is approval of the minute, minutes, excuse me, four of September 17th, approval of the minutes of September 18th, and approval of the minutes from September 24th, and approval of a presentation of the warrants for the month of September. entertain a motion concerning.
Between the 20th and 21st.
Excuse me, thank you. We have, actually, yeah. Three items. So with the exception of the 24th, we have the three items of September 17th, September 8th, and the warrants for September. But entertain a motion concerning the consent calendar.
I will, we approve the consent calendar as just a problem with the mayor.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
A motion and a second concerning the consent items. Confer the discussion, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, we'll call item F2, approval of the minutes of, excuse me. Item F4, approval of the minutes of September 24th. Do you have a change recommended for those minutes?
Um, yes. I would like to move that we amend the minutes from September 24th to say that at the end, we, the council directed the incoming city administrator to enter into negotiations for city clerk and for the mayor to sign any resulting off the letter.
We have a, a motion to approve that item with the amendment just mentioned by Mayor Proton. Is there a second?
Seconded.
So motion and seconded, any further discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G1, oath of office for Chief of Police Brian Churchill. I have the, the honor of swearing in the chief, chief, if you'd like to come out. Um, I would note that, uh, maybe I should note this afterwards. Uh, um, anyway, the chief has officially sworn in a week or so ago so that he could wear his uniform and participate, but we wanted to do it formally in public and recognize your service, of course. Are you ready? I, Brian Churchill, do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do.
No, no, you.
I affirm.
Actually, are you? Are you going to repeat?
Yeah, for you.
Yeah, I think so.
You're going to make it a little shorter though, mayor.
I?
I.
Brian Churchill, do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Brian Churchill, do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Police Chief.
Faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Police Chief.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
On which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Chief, we have. We, we have these little Manatee Springs pins. They, they recognize people who make a difference in our community. And I also have pins for the rest of the department. I don't know, I couldn't remember if I've gone around to, and even if I have, I certainly have some new faces. So I do have pins for the department. If you can count them up. Hopefully, there's enough. If there are not, please let me know. Thank you very much for all of your help, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome to Manatee Springs.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, the chief has been officially, uh, in office for, uh, nearly for 10 days. And, uh, having jumped into the fray, a pretty unusual situation in the first week in office, we did great. So thank you very, very much. So I'm going to go ahead and sign this and then I can give this to Judy and. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Um, item G2, consideration of approval, actually, we're not considering approval. Um, I believe what we were doing is having a presentation and update of the, um, Williams Canyon functionality assessment. And, uh, Mr. Cheney, I think we're going to handle that assessment. It's an item that we have been advised that as an operational item, that we do not, uh, need to approve it. We need to certainly hear what's going on, and if we have any questions or concerns or comments, then we can give those to Mr. Cheney. Mr. Cheney?
Yeah, so after discussing with Mrs. Howell and Jeff Jones from Public Works, Public Works Director, uh, we, we looked at the manual and found that it, it's basic, but it does cover what's required to clean the channel. We are going to discuss with BH, BH and I, continue discussing with them on improvements to the manual. So we will not finish the final payment until they finish all the requirements um, that, when it was counseled, some of the public addressed, and ourselves, that we saw were missing certain items. So we're going to make sure the manual is complete before we accept it and move it into practice. Um, from a standpoint of, a few of the questions, uh, basically, let me find those notes, right here. The 24, Highway 24 runoff, um, it was addressed in the manual, um, about putting some screens to stop anything from coming through. Um, again, there may be some other issues we're not going to talk to them about, about other chemicals that may come off the runoff, um, and how we would address those, because that could be better in the manual itself on what we need to do as a city. Um, so we're going to address that issue with them as well. Uh, there is a manual for the Mineral Springs Foundation monitoring, uh, which I found today. Um, so, um, we have that manual which was prepared by a different group, and we have that available just today. So I didn't have a chance to go through the whole manual, but we did it out to, uh, interested parties on there. The debris nets in the manual is a bit general. Uh, so we're going to ask them to give us more details on what we can do for tightening the nets and all the, uh, the safety requirements for the channel itself and the debris back. So it's a bit general, um, and it's not going to serve us much good to see all this high technical, um, overview of general nets. So we want to get more details on that, so we're going to ask for that as well. Um, and they're going to have a completed project once we get back with them on that information, and then give us that product. And from an operations standpoint, we should be able to make that decision that this will serve our purpose to keep the channel safe and working.
I, I'm curious if you heard back from CDA.
I have not. Um, hoping to hear back, so I.
Okay. So I, I would ask that we formalize our requests in writing.
Okay.
That we formalize it to both our local representative as well as perhaps of the chain. I think that it's time that we have something in writing with some dates and some times and some actions. Uh, we've requested from them for, I don't know how long now, probably a year, and so far it's not.
And have you personally been, like, requesting that most of the time?
Uh, it's been a combination of myself, Ms. Cobal, um, I don't know, I assume BH I has been.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think it's time to estimate that and put something in writing.
Assessment for the maintenance manual, we viewed what was in the packet. What they zeroed in on is a policy matter. Council sets policies, we all know. It's the policy we relate to groundwater for which the city of Manas True Springs is exempted from, uh, certain practices that, uh, all the businesses, residents, et cetera, have to comply with. Uh, the exemption also applies to CSU. And without Councilman Smith needing to recuse himself, I would like to ask on behalf of that citizen that the CSU exclusion be focused on. That citizen recommends they not be excluded. And I thought that was a rational argument on your part. But not to be continued here.
So if you was looking at that, I was, I thought it was just Manatee Springs that was excluded, uh, not all jurisdictions. But perhaps we can check that?
I'll look into that.
And is that what you, are you asking both CSU and, or Manatee Springs not to be excluded?
No, uh, Manatee Springs as is. CSU is the question.
Well, Manatee Springs is excluded.
Correct.
You, you're not suggesting a change regarding that?
No.
Okay.
Yes, I'll look into that.
Okay. Anything else concerning this matter, any questions from Mr. Cheney? All right. We move on to item G3, discuss and direct staff regarding additional car availability. We did receive a note from the cops saying that they had a third car that they were, for hundreds of years, and they offered it to us. Um, and so the question is, do you want to accept that gift or ask?
And if I could, um, I talked with a couple of people who've been working on the other two cars, and it is our, not our recommendation to accept it at this point.
It is our recommendation not to accept it.
That's correct.
All right. Um, anybody else have any thoughts about that, want to accept it, or want to accept it? No. That's one of the parts. They have, um, I don't know where we are. We answered all of their questions. I directed them to talk to the cop directly, and that's what I know.
No.
So, no, no?
No.
No?
Wouldn't part.
Okay.
No.
Just want to point out information, do we have a staff position on this? Staff recommendation?
We do not believe we should accept this due to funding issues and everything else that comes with it. So we believe we should not.
I presume so from the budget talk, thank you. Yes, also, not accepted. And I think that was your recommendation. I feel on behalf of the group, there's no thing.
Group that was in need of this.
And I agree, um, I just would note that there is no guarantee. I don't know, the con may have other arrangements if we don't accept it. And I don't know whether Woodland Park is in position to do it or not, but, um, whoever, let's see. Ms. Howell, if you could relay that to, uh, Mr. Johnston, that would be great.
That's.
But thank you very much for, for that offer. We're trying to decline. We'll call item G4, uh, first reading, Portland's number 1719, establishing a schedule of fees and charges, and otherwise establishing a rate structure for city and water service. Ms. Davis, you're going to go through this. I would point out for the public that we do have a fairly lengthy memo, uh, in the packet. If you'd like to see that, it's available online. It spells out, um, a number of different things, uh, including, well, Ms. Davis is going to go through a lot of this, but, but basically, just in summary, there is information available both in summary form in the packet, and then also in detail form, we have a report from the organization called.
Stand.
Stand Tech, who outline, uh, this rate evaluation. And so just, so that the public should be advised as to why we're doing this, what we're doing, it does impact the homeowner in Manatee Springs, property line, as it is, uh, commercial or otherwise. So with that, Ms. Davis, what would you like to explain to us concerning this rate section?
Okay, well, the purpose of this item is to inform the, the city council and the public about the 2019 water sewer rate study results and recommend a change in the water sewer rate scheduled to take effect January 1st every year for at least the next five years. And it's planned that the city will be performing water sewer rate studies every two years, and is intended to perform an X rate study in 2021, at which time these feeds will be revisited. So, um, also, I just want to mention that per the code in the Manatee Springs, it states that anytime the Colorado Springs Utilities changes their wastewater rates, and which of, of course affects the city, that we can then go and change those rates, but then per our.
Tuesday?
Per.
Believe. Um, we don't know the results of this, but these rates assume that it's the worst case scenario.
Exactly.
If it turns out that it's less, we can adjust the rates accordingly.
Exactly. This is true. So this is a, uh, a PowerPoint presentation that was prepared for us and, um, let's. Would you like me to drive or you? Yeah, I would love you to drive. Okay, so there was a rate study that was done earlier in the year, and then the, the capital improvements was changed. So we then went back to this company, and we asked them to update the water sewer rate study based upon these changes.
Why am I not allowed to tell me?
Please?
Why am I not allowed to tell me?
So what has changed since the last rate study?
I have no idea. Would you be delighted to have him in here, or would you just leave his dog outside?
Yes.
I think that's the, uh, point of contention is, is that his, uh, dog in here, which is not permitted.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Would you like that enforced?
Uh, yes.
So what has changed since the last rate study? Uh, well, the, the actual 2019 end of year fund balance for the water sewer was adjusted, and, uh, the update from the 2019 original budget to the 2019 final budget. They incorporated the 2020 proposed budget, which we'll be presenting later tonight. And they updated the most recent five-year capital improvement plan and average, uh, capital improvement spending from 2025 to 2029. So the changes for the water capital is that there's going to be a hydro power plant of, that's going to cost $350,000 with a loan that's already been approved, uh, from the Colorado Water and Power Authority. Uh, we're looking at, uh, putting in an automated metering infrastructure project. Uh, we're updating the lease purchase assumptions, which before was 64, now it's 730, it's a split between water and sewer. And we updated the annual average CIP spending, which I've already mentioned. Also, instead of paying as we go in terms of our capital improvements, we're going to be looking at bonding. The sewer, once again, the same.
And that there was presumably any bonding would go to the public vote?
No, because this is enterprise.
Not with the enterprise, okay, thank you.
Yes. So the sewer, once again, that same lease purchase, the split is changed. And the, the CIP, the spending, it's, it's been changed for our new assumptions. So the utility has a financial goal of maintaining the debt service coverage target of one, 1.1 times, uh, maintain adequate reserve requirements and adequately fund the capital improvement plan to maintain the level of service, and also to build an emergency reserve to fund emergency expenditures due to that aging infrastructure. Uh, the water summary is a rate increases borrowing projected to fund all operations and maintenance and capital improvements while meeting all the financial targets. And once again, to begin to build that emergency reserve. So the proposed rates are for 2020, a 9% increase, oh, for the water, sorry, 2020, a 9% increase, 2021, once again, a 9% increase, 2022, 9% increase. But then after that, we can decrease to a 5% increase for 2023 and 2024.
Ms. Davis, the, the $1.6 million borrowing needs, is that also the borrowing capacity?
No.
Are those things matched?
No, the borrowing capacity and the borrowing needs are, are not, this is based upon what the capital improvement plan is.
So that's the need, is the capacity there as well?
Uh, yes, with these rates.
Yes.
Capacity will be there.
All right. That would, that was my question.
Right.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question to you back?
Sure.
I'm sorry that I, I should have asked it back a couple slides ago. But are all of the capital improvements that were identified in the capital improvement plans that we've expended a lot of resources on over the past couple of years included in this?
Yes, the master plan is included in these capital improvements. I believe some things have been expedited due to the aging infrastructure and the issues that we've been having.
Okay, so then, other than those, everything else is in accordance with those plans? And now we finally have them in a budget?
Right.
Perfect, thank you.
Right.
Just, just to elaborate on that, we have a master plan for water and a master plan for the sewer.
That's correct.
Those are the two plans we're referring to?
Yes.
They're all pegged in?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make a correction we should have done earlier on your front memo. It's the background, and then we show the projects. But we discussed that in the retreat, this Mountain View Lane. That if you leave the Mountain View Lane, then we, we understood, and it was Mountain View Road that this work's going to be done in, not Lane, because that's two different areas.
Rich?
I believe it's Mountain View Lane, I will double check that.
Because I understood from, that it was one going by the park. If that's by the park, that's road.
I'll have to double check that.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's right, somebody's expecting something that's not going to happen.
I think, I think we need to do it to set up some way that we can, um, let the public know, this is what we've done. Here's a summary of the master plan and the work that we're going to do. And then perhaps, uh, perhaps giving an update every, periodically, whatever that might be. You know, so something on our, our website that would highlight this project in particular.
That sounds like a head sport, too, that's.
So that, that would be our call.
One of the things that we are looking at is, um, hopefully, next year, we will have a project, um, update, uh, module that will be able to go in and look at any project being charged and where we're at.
And, but particularly since we're asking the community to pay for this, I think, you know, hey, this is what we're asking you to do, here's what you're getting for it, and letting them know that the process on that, that, that would be the problem.
Right. Now, the water, um, so the next page is the water rates comparison. And this can be a little misleading, because this is comparing our 2020 rate to all the other entities, their 2019 rate. This does not include their increases. So as you can see right at this time, the water rate is in the middle. But once they put their rates into place, which we don't know at this time, this could change. So the sewer financial plan, uh, includes a baseline scenario and a preferred scenario. And we're in, we're suggesting the preferred scenario, because the preferred scenario includes a, um, that extra amount of money for the, uh, emergency situations. The baseline does not build up any kind of emergency fund. So the sewer proposed rates, these are the preferred. And so it, once again, 2020, we're looking at an 8.5%. And 2021, excuse me, 8.50% increase, uh, 2021, 8.50, 2022, 8.50. And then, uh, 23 and 24, once again, a, a decrease to just 5% per year.
So just for those that are, um, that are watching this, that don't have access to this particular presentation, the, the rates that you're proposing would go from 2018, $33.01 to $36.11 for residential,
Uh huh.
And $51.03 to $56.37 for commercial, and that's for the 2020 rate.
Right.
And then the proposed rates for the sewer would be from $33.52 to $36.36 residential rate, and $46.22 to $50.14 for commercial rates from 2018 to 2020. The percentages might be a little harder for somebody to calculate, so I just wanted to make sure they had those numbers.
Right, okay. So the sewer rate comparison, once again, it, it has that little bit of a misleading, uh, function here, where it's comparing the 2020 to 2019 rates. Although our sewer rate, it's still high, it's, it's, uh, but I don't think it will be as high once the 2020 rates come into play. So, um, and that's just a function of our aging infrastructure and our capital needs. So then we have a combined rate spend bar for the survey, which shows that Fountain and Monument are both still higher than us. But once again, remember, these are 2019 rates compared to our 2020 rate. And then we have one final, uh, list. We wanted to show what the 2020 capital improvement plans were. And it's the Clarksville Road Water Sewer Main Replacement, Mesa Tank, Exterior Prep and Repaint, Mountain View. Now, we're going to double check, make sure whether it's Lane or Road, water main replacement, and then Plainview Subdivision Water Inlet Main Replacement. It's a very ambitious plan, the staff is, feels confident that they will be able to implement all these capital improvements in 2020.
And that is a total of roughly $10 million, Rich?
Rich?
Can we take?
Uh, I don't think it's quite that, right?
Okay, just something under that.
And was this?
The amounts are listed in the memo, they were not there, so I just wanted to know if that.
Right, I, I wrote that memo a few days ago. Um, also to point out that the wa, while you're seeing those numbers, remember that we are planning to bond, so it's not, we're not, no longer going to try to pay as you go.
We probably wouldn't be able to afford it.
Right.
Might pay as you go. Questions from council? Got a question?
Yes, sir.
So $23.00 of bonding, which other $40.00 of projects?
That would be, uh, we're planning to do a dual, double year, so 2020 and then 2021. Rich, do you have those projects off the top of your head?
We've got 2021, 22, 23 are fairly heavy in projects, 2024 is a very light year. Um, got Crystal Hills Tank improvements, auxiliary water tank coming up, um, Crystal Park Road Water Main Replacement. Um, just general water distribution system main replacements every year coming up. Automated metering infrastructure, which we're hoping will only be funding 20% of that, 80% grant funded.
How, how? Getting back to the mayor's question about capacity for, for debt. What I don't see is a new water tank. And I understand the, the auxiliary tank first, so we have some water to replace the tank. And I guess my question is, you know, we were told it's a $5 million project to replace the main tank.
Probably, again, it's a 2 million gallon tank, and typically, they're about a doll, dollar per gallon, but finding the real estate to put it on is, and the challenges of attitude, it could cost as much as $5 million.
Right, so I guess my question is, how long is the bonding going to be? And when are we going to have the capacity to replace our tank? And when should we be? And when should we be concerned about replacing the tank, since in the recent past, we've been told to start being concerned about replacing the tank?
Can you get up there so you can see them?
My understanding, just going to introduce yourself.
Sorry, that's Rich Fabro, Deputy Public Works Director. And speaking with Kirk, our water treatment plant operator, um, the last dives of both tanks, they're actually in fairly good condition. Obviously, the big challenge with the Mesa Tank is, we can't take it offline until we have a, a backup plan. I think, and I believe it is functional and repairable, once we're able to get this auxiliary tank online, we can get in there, sandblast, re-coach the interior. Um, it's on a solid rock foundation, um. I don't see that we need to replace it, I think it's repairable with the lifestyle as, I don't know just yet. Uh, see in a few more decades, once it's rehoused inside and out. Fair enough, Chris?
Uh, yeah, the question on that is, I know we keep saying that we can't do anything with that, but I know in years past, they, they would, during the winter, they would bypass the tank, keep the city in water, and do the work and things on that, so I just don't understand, is that system not available anymore? I mean, if they take that away, or you can actually run straight from the treatment plant into the system?
Not familiar with, uh, Kirk having it running on a bypass mode, um, I would have to double check with him. But I'd be concerned about our large storage amounts.
Right.
We're losing, you know, one to one and a half million gallons of what typically stores in a day. Obviously, we still have the Crystal Hills Tank, but they're at different levels.
I know in the past, that's how they took the tank down and re, reffered it at that point in time, so it was just a question.
Okay, follow in the lap. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any other questions from Ms. Davis?
I'm looking at citizens one seven one nine establishing scheduled fees and charges and otherwise established rate structure for city water and sewer services on first region instead of public hearing thereon, first November fifth at six P M, or as soon as thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Second, is the motion a second? Any further discussion? Okay, now, clear the vote. Motion passed, unanimous. Alright, we will have, uh, as was mentioned, we will have a public hearing on November fifth, um, right here. Item G five, presentation of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget and five year capital improvement plan. Just for the record, um, and this is not a, a formal discussion of this budget, it is a formal presentation as required by law. Um, we do have a formal discussion of the budget coming up on October twenty-second. Uh, we have a series of questions that Ms. Howell will present, uh, in terms of the issues that we're going to be looking at. We're hoping to, of course, uh, she'll get that out, so we can add to that list if we need to, but Ms. Davis, if you'd like to formally present the two thousand and twenty budget.
Right, we do have a, a PowerPoint slide about the budget calendar, which we're putting up. So, um, as required by the Department of Local Affairs, the budget officer must submit a proposed budget to the governing board by October fifteenth each year. This is fulfilling that requirement. After a budget retreat on October fifth, the boards and commissions presentation work session on October eighth. The proposed twenty twenty budget maintains city operations, provides for, uh, six million in capital improvement projects, and for the majority of the boards and commissions' requests for funding. The fiscal impact is the general fund unassigned ending fund balance for twenty twenty is projected to be, uh, about a million, thir- and thirty-three thousand. Uh, the, the increase from the budget retreat, which was around nine hundred and seventy thousand, is mainly attributed to increasing the parking revenues for twenty nineteen, after receipt of the August revenues, which led to a change in assumptions for the year. And after discussion with Dan Lion, with S P Plus, the parking company that runs our parking program. And, uh, increase three percent in twenty twenty, twenty twenty revenues over twenty nineteen is, uh, the industry standard for twenty twenty that they are using. So due to the fact that the parking experts are using a three percent increase, I decided also to increase the parking revenues by three percent. So no action is required during this meeting, but a notice of budget must be supposed to afterward. So concerning the budget. Um. The city government's budget is a fund structure, and I thought I would just talk a couple of minutes about fund, financial accounting. Uh, governmental funds are principally supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenues. And there are five types of governmental funds, of which the city has three types. The general fund, and special revenue funds, which receive their revenue from a dedicated revenue stream, and capital projects. So the city's governmental funds are the general fund, which is the operating fund, which is the biggest fund in which all governments have. And then if they have special revenues, then they'll have these other funds. So in our case, we have the transportation fund, which is funded by the single holler fee. The open space fund, which is, has a sales tax of one tenth of a percent, and eight tenths of a millime, so it has two separate taxes supporting it. Law enforcement fund, which is a special revenue of a fee charged by law court officers and used for, uh, capital improvement and uniforms for the police department and their bulletproof vest program. And the conservation trust fund, which is state lottery funds. P P R T A fund, which is a sales tax of one percent. The El Paso Boulevard Veterans Park Fund, which has property tax, what will affect maintenance of that area. And then, of course, the capital improvements fund. We also have enterprise funds, which are used to report the activities or which are fees charged to external users for goods or services. And the city has three enterprise funds, there's the water enterprise fund, the sewer enterprise fund, and the storm drainage fund. So the most important page in the budget book, as far as I'm concerned, at least for the general fund, will be page fourteen, which is a summary of the general fund. So the top part of the page has the revenues, the middle part of the page has the expenditures, and then the, the bottom third of the page has the, the general fund unassigned fund balance, which is available for expenditures of a general nature, of which, once again, I told you, it's, it's, it's predicted to have a million thirty-three thousand at the end of twenty twenty. And then also it has some committed and assigned, uh, fund balances that are dedicated to specific purposes. So this-
Excuse me, I just need for clarification. And so we're on the same page?
What you're referring to is page fourteen in the handout, right?
Right.
And just put my eyes on the general fund reserve you mentioned, it's probably a million and seven thousand dollars too. Thank you, Nancy. Got it?
Unassigned fund balance.
Thank you.
Right, well, actually, I was pretty much concluding my presentation with the fact that this is considered a balanced, uh, fund, uh, balanced budget because it, it does not overspend the combination of the carryover of the unassigned fund balance from last year plus the revenues from what is forecasted for twenty twenty. So this fulfills the state law requirement of presenting the budget.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Davis? Great, we'll be back at it again next week. Um, community meetings are going to be at five-
Five thirty.
Five thirty, on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-ninth. Both will be here, staff and, uh, council, those council members who are available, uh, will be here to answer questions about the budget. Copies of the budget presumably will be available, or a summary will be available. The budget is available online.
Yes, I am correct.
And, um, glad to answer questions either the twenty-second, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-ninth. And then we will move into first being, um, November nineteenth.
Okay.
Ms. Davis, thank you very much.
Just a clarification.
Sure.
Ms. Mary?
Yes, sir.
Uh, work session next week, that's where we'll dive into detail on the capital plan?
Yes.
Yeah, the section of the notebook.
Right.
Sewer.
It is included with the budget, but it's, it's not part of the retirement in terms of state law, which is why we'll dive into it next week.
And Ms. Howell, did you have a handout for us, was there any issues, or you're going to get that to us?
I can, um, I was gonna send it, but I do have, I can say what they are about, if you'd like to.
Sure, just to, just to summarize what issues that we still believe are outstanding, um, and there may be others. Don't take this as a final list, this is a list to see what we're missing.
This is what I heard from our, um, budget retreat, that these were the items we'd like to have some additional discussion. Again, if I missed something, I will send it out, please, um, let me know if you'd like some additional items. The environmental resolution, the oversight and program management, how we're gonna do that. High Watha Gardens funding and project management. Um, Chamber E D C and U R A work plan for twenty twenty. Uh, and I will be reaching out to both of them, the city hall remodel, if you wanna look at that or not. Uh, one thing that we did not discuss, but I would ask for a consideration, is in the last budget, we did not have any employee salary adjustment or spot awards because we felt that we did the bare bones budget, but since there's been some changes, I'd prefer that to at least be considered and, and thought about. And then a public information, community engagement, volunteering manager, something in that effect to help us move forward. Those are the items I have, I will put that out in the email, and if you have additional items, please let me know.
And was the capital improvement debt, did you say that, and I just missed that?
No, he mentioned capital improvement, that he wanted to go through the capital improvement in more detail, council members tied it, so I can have that.
Anybody from council have other items at the top of their head? If not, um, of course, get with Ms. Howell and move to other items. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to identify, here are the issues that we're gonna work through. We're gonna work through those issues, make some tentative decisions, and so forth, so we're just trying to provide that structure. But we don't wanna eliminate the discussion of anything if somebody wants to bring that up.
Yes, on the top of the head, uh, on the capital plan, three items.
Okay.
One is the retaining wall along Lover's Lane. We did have an engineering estimate for that wall, it should be in our files, and unfortunately, it was a very large figure.
Right.
Like capital, or something like that.
Yeah.
Um, and the second item is, we do semi-end the review of our bridges, and having a contingency and the plan for, I think we have twenty-four bridges. Right now, we wouldn't have any funding for the, I'll call them minor bridges after you address Camden and Park Street Bridge. Uh, and then the last item, I forgot, but I'll send you one.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
And I will send this out, hopefully by tomorrow, at five.
Great, thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you.
Alright, we have four hearings we're going to conduct tonight. Uh, the first is center reading and public hearing, that will call in H one.
May I ask, can we take, uh, a quick break? We are trying to text Kim, and we don't know where, can we take a quick break, quickly?
Sure.
I apologize if we take a quick break.
Sure, we'll take an early, quick break, Rick.
Thank you.
I'm walking around, sorry.
I just wanted to know, did I hear five?
I voted no twice last week. I voted no twice last week.
Sorry, I never imagined it would be this hard, this one hour.
Councilman Todd? We're back in session at, uh, six fifty. We'll call item H one, center reading and public hearing, ordinance number one- We'll call item H1, second reading and public hearing, ordinance number 1819, consideration of planning, commission recommendation of approval of rezoning of 415 El Paso Boulevard from commercial to general residential. And, Ms. Johnson, I believe you are handling this?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public. So this is for consideration of second reading and potential adoption of ordinance 1819, rezoning of 415 El Paso Boulevard from commercial zone to general residential. And the purpose of the rezoning is so that the use of the property, which is residential, is consistent with the zoning. And so the recommendation this evening is to conduct a public hearing and take action on ordinance number 1819.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? If not, we're going to open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing now, we will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council? Motion, please?
I move to reapprove ordinance number 1819, rezoning the property at 415 El Paso Boulevard, Lot 1, Lundgren Estate subdivision, from the commercial zoning classification to the general residential zone.
Motion. So motion and second, is there any further discussion?
Just a quick one of discussion. Thank you very much for the very informative word that was in the bracket, makes no brainer. People watching and wondering why we're doing this.
Thank you, all right. Any other questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll call the item H2, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1919, and ordinance amending section 18.60.010, and repealing and reenacting title 18.88 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code concerning regulation of wireless service facilities. Ms. Johnson, I believe this is your item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the purpose of this item is to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of ordinance number 1819 regarding amendments to the Manitou Springs Code of Ordinance related to wireless cell facilities. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first consideration, and there has been no public comment to staff since the first reading is either.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? If not, we're going to open the public hearings, is there anybody in the public wishes to comment on ordinance number 1919? A quiet crowd out there. If not, we're hearing no comments, or no one wishing to make any comments, we will close the public hearing. With any continuing motion or questions concerning ordinance number 1919. I move that we approve ordinance number 1919 and ordinance amending section 18.60.010, and repealing and reenacting title 18.88 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code concerning regulation of wireless service facilities. If there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? I just had one comment, and that was to thank staff and Mr. Parker for putting together the ordinance, incorporating the changes that we requested, I think it's the best we could do. It gives us some flexibility, it helps us understand, not understand, at least be aware of, some of the health issues as we go forward. So I want to thank you all for being creative and putting your heads together to come up with this, I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna call item H3, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 2019, and ordinance of the City of Manitou Springs. Ms. Johnson's just snuck away, but tell her thank you, to do that. Ordinance number 2019, and ordinance of the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado revised in chapter 9.52 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code concerning firearms. Ms. Howell, do you have anything to add to this, or Mr. Parker?
I'd be happy to, yeah. This was initially brought to City Council on City Council's request, because you wanted to open carry firearms in city parks and open space, and that was in your first reading version, and then based on City Council's comments, they actually wanted to, you all wanted to extend this to all city-owned buildings. So the second reading version extends the open carry prohibition to all city-owned buildings. And then lists of three that were actually included initially, which is City Hall, Manitou Springs, Plaza Center, to Public Library, those are just, those are not exclusive, but ordinance now said all city-owned buildings.
Any other questions for Mr. Parker? We're going to open the public hearing, is there anybody from the audience, anybody in the public wish to comment on ordinance number 2019, ordinance concerning firearms? If not, hearing no one wishing to comment, we will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council, sir?
Still not in favor, I'd rather know who has the gun than to vote to don't.
Any other comments? All right, now we're going to take a motion.
I move we approve ordinance number 2019, and ordinance of the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado, revised in chapter 9.52 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code concerning firearms.
If the motion is served second.
Second.
So motion the second, any further discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes, okay. Motion passes vote three. We have item H4, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 2119, and ordinance of the City, and ordinance of the City, and ordinance of the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado, amending section 9.24 at dot zero dot zero concerning the definition of open and public marijuana use.
I can address this one as well, if you don't mind. The City Council several years ago passed their own definition of what it means to use marijuana openly and publicly. There was no definition in state law of that term, that's still illegal in the Colorado law. State passed a definition of actually what now constitutes open and public consumption under state law, and this ordinance brings Manitou Springs' definition into conformance with the state definition, which will hopefully ease everybody's understanding of what it is, help your officers enforce it properly. Basically, the new definition is that to be open and public, it needs to be done in a public place and observable from a public place. So it actually reduces the number of illegal uses of consumption of marijuana in the city based on, in comparison to the old version, which had to be in a public place or observable from a public location. So what used to be or is now an and.
A lot of work for a little change.
Yeah, but I think it'd be, it is a little difficult to have two different definitions applicable in the same jurisdiction, so hopefully this will be, it'll ease enforcement, and also, if anybody wanted to challenge the city's definition, it'll be challenging the entire state definition, not just the city's now, so.
Any questions for Mr. Parker? Not, this is a public hearing, we're going to open up a public hearing. Haven't had a lot of people step up so far in the other public hearings. Is there anybody tonight who wishes to comment concerning ordinance number 2119? Seeing no public comments, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to take a motion for further discussion concerning ordinance 2119.
Yes, sir. With this changed, do we need to inform our two retail shops that maybe they need to change what they're putting on their bags? Earlier in the year, we said they could put some things on the bags related to use and all kinds of things. Don't know if this is part of that?
It probably would be a good idea to inform them, so if they do have anything invested in this, it would be, their bags are still accurate. I'm not sure what they do now, nor do they, but it would be a good idea.
I will take that action.
Any other questions? If not, we're going to continue.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2119, and ordinance of the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado, amending section 9.24.010 concerning the definition of open and public marijuana use.
If the motion is second, any further discussion? If not, please vote. Councilman Todd? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Item I, city administrator's report.
Oh, I have it right, sorry.
Narrows Road will be paved on October 23rd. Residents were given letters to read last week to let them know the date. And the other thing I'm working on right now is seeing how we can use Civic Plus and combine all of our separate programs with Agenda, HR, Emergency Notification System 311, and Community Engagement Software that come with that. So we're trying to see if that will save us some money and make things smoother and smoother with our software programs.
With that, I just want to echo the mayor's comments about yesterday, and the chief calling his collaboration and what he did with El Paso County and CSPD, and how he prepared for no matter what occurred. Did a phenomenal job, his leadership, public works was stepped up, and it was a joy to work with the school district and really build a collaborative effort and collaborative partnership that I think we can do, or have any issue that is before us. So I do want to mention that. Chief and I went and talked to our business owner yesterday regarding some concerns that they had with shoplifting. They were not available, but then the chief went and followed up. The chief is working on a program with shoplifting, and will be working with Leslie on that, and has some great ideas of how to enhance the downtown patrol. So he will be working on that, so I recognize him for that. October 22nd, we will be represented at the CSU rate case. We will be, we do have a consultant, a rate consultant, that will be speaking on our behalf, and there will open the comments, and then we have our rate consultant that will be speaking, and we're just asking them to look at their methodology. So we're hoping that that can make a difference, but we are going to go and speak that publicly at the time. And then I did talk about the budget items, and I will be sending that out to you hopefully by tomorrow. And so if you have additional ones, please send them back to me. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Howell? I have one question, and this may be a combined answer from Ms. Howell, Mr. Parker, and that is perhaps a comment on, and I don't believe that we've made a public comment concerning the administrative error that the ballot issued. I wonder if we might want to just make a public comment, and what our intention is in terms of moving forward with that. I will indicate that I provided Ms. Johnson a note she asked me to draft, and I-
Natalie, not Kim.
Natalie Johnson, not Kim Johnson, correct. She asked me, there, so go, to provide this. And so perhaps, I'm not sure, who's the best one to just introduce it, or let me just let councilmen know that?
Yeah, no, I'd be hap- happy to. My understanding of what occurred is the City Council intended to approve the match ballot question with a 25-year sunset, and the version that ended up getting on the ballot has a 15-year sunset. And so the question is, how do we move forward from here, you know, with the ballot issue, the taper ballot major not reflecting the exact provisions of the City Council's approved ballot major, which is on my ordinance. And so, in taking a look at this, my basic opinion is that the ballot question remains valid for the 15-year period, because City Council in approving the 25-year period of the ordinance implicitly approved a 15-year period as part of that 25-year period. So a taper question basically is an approval, it's an authorization to impose a tax. Doesn't actually impose the tax. So what happens after a taper question passes, if it does pass, is that City Council within passing ordinance, it actually imposes the tax. And so, you know, my suggestion is going to be that, in that, if it doesn't pass, there's really no issue with the pass. If it passes, the city, the voters have approved the 15-year tax, not a 25-year tax. You can't impose a 25-year tax, but the 15 years is still valid. And City Council is going to adopt the ordinance implementing that tax for 15 years. As an expression, the City Council intends to impose that 15-year tax. And if City Council wants to get the extra 10 years, it will have to put another ballot, another question on the ballot, or an issue on the ballot technically, tapers, questions or issues, to get the extra 10 years. So that's my legal suggestion. But I don't think that the ballot question is invalid, because there, there's, the duration's different. I think, of course, they'll look behind, look behind the issue, you're not going to get 25 years, that's for sure, because the voters only approved the 15-year. Of course, generally want to give deference to the voters, to the approval initiative petition, so they're going to want to, of course, they're going to say the voters approved this, City Council intended 25 years, but they only got 15. So I think they're going to, it's going to be a valid question. And if for some reason, City Council decides that they don't want to impose a 15-year tax, you don't have to. You're an authorization to do so, so your intent can be expressed when you actually adopt the actual sales tax ordinance to implement the approved taper question, every issue. Does that make sense?
And presumably, if the ballot passes November, we would do that sometime in the coming months after that.
Well, because the, except, the taper, the ballot major approves the tax starting on January 1, 2020. We want to have it effective before that date.
Any questions for Mr. Parker? So, the statement that I sent to Ms. Johnson reads, "City Council has learned that due to an administrative error, the wrong version of the match ordinance referred to the ballot. The initial version referenced the 15-year expiration of the tax. A version adopted at second reading included a 25-year expiration. Assuming that the ballot issue passes, the tax will continue for 15 years. It is anticipated that the city will consider a bond issue to pay for capital improvements at one or more, at one or more of the match properties in 2020, and will ask voters to revise the expiration depending on what is needed for the proposed bond issue." So that was the language that I drafted. Anybody have any changes or concerns about that, let me know.
Yeah, just as a note, if you don't know, taper, if you want to add a tax, increase a tax, you can only have that on, for the city, you can only get the November elections. So you have to wait to increase the duration in some next November.
Right, along with the bond issue.
Right.
Okay. Could I clarify something that I heard? That is that the City Council, even though the, if the citizens pass this issue, City Council does not have to implement the tax?
That's right, yep. The taper ballot measures are basically authorizations to impose the tax. The actual imposition is done via an ordinance changing your sales tax provision code.
Any other questions concerning that issue? Ms. Howell, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Can you? All right. Council, we'll call item J, see if we're after council correspondence.
My neighbors have three kids in the school district, and they wanted to express their gratitude on the way Monday's event was handled, the communication, I thought was fantastic. And they just felt the whole thing worked out great, they appreciated the cooperation of everybody involved.
Anything else?
I received a letter last week from the match. Maybe it dealt specifically with my ward and the library expansion project. I forwarded that on to council. It arrived on Wednesday, and it invited my neighbors to come to a mini-meeting, a match mini-event at Squirrel. Five thirty, seven thirty, there was just probably no way most people could get there. I did go back and forth with Natalie Johnson, who signed the letter. It looks like they only sent it to registered voters, but the people who live right next to the library, no one who's a registered voter there got that. So I'm just putting this into the public record, because I found it disappointing. They can do what they want, I just felt like this wasn't the right way to do this at all. So, and there's a lot of things in this note that appear to be happening that my neighborhood hasn't heard of at all as well. So this note's available if anybody wants to take a look at it. Thanks.
I just have one thing, I had a conversation with a resident in your neighborhood across the street from you. And this people bought a B and B, they've been pouring tons and tons of money in. And after putting $40,000 into this historic, small, little building, not the big Victorian, little building, he finds out that he has to rip off the roof and put in like a R50, some kind of insulative, and it's costing him thousands and thousands of more dollars, plus he's losing his- of more dollars, plus he's losing his income by doing it. And, you know, he doesn't, I don't think he faults us. I think he's putting the finger to regional. And I just thought I'd bring it to you guys because we do have a lot of misfit with regional and I think, you know, it might be appropriate to look at other ways of getting some of this work done without having to go through regional. So, I mean, it's an ancient building anyway. How, how much, you know, it's actually, it is going to lift the roof. It's changing the building. So, it's just a conversation in passing.
Where is that, is, it's across the street from you?
It's the White Yar.
Oh, White Yar.
Yeah, yeah. The little hallowed house.
All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
I too, I appreciate my good compliments on the way that was handled yesterday and the collaboration that was between the school and the city. And also, I want to do a personal note because I know, I've been put in that position back in the days of my own fire of having to stand in front of a camera, the P I O. And for his first time out there, I backed up and renewed it two, three times. Roy did an excellent job, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I'm dating the P I O.
Great choice.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilman Todd?
Congratulations, Roy. Just myself also, for great House of Commons that Monday. Thank you. Becky, you gave me the particulars on what you shared. I think I know what this is related to. I'll be glad to take that to regional board tomorrow. That's what I need. So, just off my.
I can send you his contact.
That'd be, that'd be perfect. Okay, that's it.
All right.
I just wanted to comment on the workday on Saturday. I worked at Hyaloth Gardens.
Who's going to comment on it? Go ahead. We're all commenting on that.
I was at Hyaloth Gardens and I want to acknowledge Denise and her husband were there. Roy was there working. Karen Birch told from staff, rode a bike in and worked all day. And there's a lot of public works. I believe they were on the clock. I don't think you guys were on the clock. But it was a real, and a bunch of volunteers as well. And it was, if you haven't seen the work that was done, it's remarkable how different it looks and much improved, which brings up, to add to your list, the gardening contract for budget. But that one great, and then, of course, the potluck Saturday night was just a fun, uplifting experience. So, good job, everybody, for work on that.
Well, I'll just follow along with that and echo back. We had maybe forty-five, fifty people show up for tree planting. They dispersed throughout the community in about five or six different sites. I think the youngest one we had was, how old is actually these days? A year or so. So, the youngest one we had was a year or so. He was down there with a shovel and I had to plant this tree. I was absolutely delighted when I was over at the high school. There were three exchange students, one from Poland, one from Turkey and one from Kyrgyzstan. And one of the girls from Turkey said to me, she looked at me and asked, you know, I've never planted a tree before. And she was so excited about planting a tree and even more excited about taking the concept home. So, it was really cool to have them come and stay here. A number of students show up, some from the youth club, some from middle school, high school. It was just the team leaders throughout the community and the teams were great. We got some trees in the ground. We were lucky with weather. I want to thank Ally McAlister, Barbara, Miss Paula Currow, Erin Schultz, was absolutely wonderful and everybody who showed up and helped participate. Both Hyaloth and the tree planting were great. We had a great potluck, as Mayor Portman Fortune mentioned, good turnout with that. We had really good representation from organizations from around the region and it was great to see the connections. And as a result of that Saturday night, there were two issues brought to the Sustainability Workweek today that we will bring to council, two really critical issues I think that we can address quickly. One involves some federal legislation, another involves trying to encourage El Paso planning to become part of the PACE program, which is an energy efficiency program for commercial buildings. So, there were great connections made, lots of good people to talk with, lots of great food and everyone. Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I did not think two, three, one. But in addition to everything that you said, Ken, and you said, Nancy, we gave out an award to the CAG and then there was a surprise award. Ken's very good about thanking everybody else, but there was a surprise award to Ken and it's a little piece of the canyon trees that came down. And I didn't get a chance to really see it, but it's Manitou, it's kind of like the city logo, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so, he got recognized too because none of this stuff would be happening if we didn't have a mayor that was going to back it up, you know? And so, I'm just really pleased. And the planting was great. We even had some guy drive by, stop the car and come running over and, I love a planting, planting. And we let him plant, the tree were planting and he was just like, oh my God, I'm going to come back like an old man and this will keep up to me. It's always really great. It impacted a lot of people. That was our first one.
And there's our first one.
So, it's only going to get better.
And just so that you know, the tree planting in twenty twenty is scheduled for April twenty second. I think that's right. No, I'm sorry. April twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, this Saturday.
But we'll have a potluck on birthday. This is the fiftieth anniversary of birthday and we're planning a community climate action celebration and potluck for the twenty-second of April. So, we'll continue to get that word out about next year. I think we're through the main portion of our agenda. We do have an executive session scheduled and if someone wouldn't mind pulling out up the revised version of the language for.
I move that we move into executive session pursuant to the Manitou Springs City Charter section five point one A for the purpose of personnel, specifically to consider the city administrative position and section five point one D for the purposes of attorney positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy negotiations and instructing negotiators in relation to the city administrative.
Is there a second? Is the motion a second and any further discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes unanimous. All right, before Ms. Howell leaves, which she is planning on doing and not coming back, and Mr. Chaney, not coming back this evening.
Before you go into negotiations.
Are there any questions?
Negotiations.
Any questions for Ms. Howell, Mr. Chaney? Mr. Chaney? If not, thank you. So, you will stop and restart?
We will. We're swapping out the audio right now. The video will be off. And when you are done, if you would hit the stop.
Right.
And the power on that and pull the flash.
Put it on your desk. Okay, so I'm going to.
And if you'll let me know what time you end. We're going to start trying to track.
Thanks for yesterday.
And the transition. So, that would be helpful also.
That'd be nice.
Good job.